And then to call this meeting to order, the first order of business is to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the Israel of liberty and justice for all.
Break that, copy the agenda. I want you to approve the agenda for this next meeting. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. We have a presentation, a motion and second on table. I propose so carry. The next order of business is a presentation by Ben West on Emerald Ash Borer.
So those of you...
I should look at because just a couple of weeks ago, we had a basically a walk through review, consulting for our park and they had noticed the Emerald Ash Borer and stuff like that. And that's something that we need to address. Don't know what you're coming to. You're the one that called me to have some being funded available from the state of Minnesota.
Yeah, so those of you who don't know me, I'm Ben West. I'm from the area who work for the DNR out of Little Fork. Most of my job is working with private landowners to help them manage their properties, but part of, part of my job is also helping communities, you know, take care of their urban forests, their community forests, their parks, anything like that. So right now, there's a grant available through the DNR. We've got $2.4 million for this round of funding and each community can get up to $150,000. No match required. And this, the target of, of this grant is to diversify community forests, replace ash trees because this Emerald Ash Borer, I don't know how familiar you guys are with it, but essentially it's wiping out ash across the eastern U.S. and currently it's as far north as Duluth, Thunder Bay, and Winnipeg. So, and it's pretty, pretty prevalent in Twin Cities too. So cities is, the communities in the cities have spent millions of dollars cutting down ash, replacing them with other species. It's really akin to the Dutch elm disease. It's, it's going to effectively wipe out our ash. Now whether that happens today, tomorrow, five years, 10 years, 20 years, it's going to take some time to get here. But starting to work on it now is important because trees take many years to reach a high ten, a size that is beneficial to us. So that's, that's kind of what I'm here to do today is give you a background on EAB and talk about the grant itself, answer any questions. So kind of a little bit more on, on EAB. It's an invasive bug from China and Manchurian region of China. Feeds on all of our native ash. So here we have black ash and green ash. It doesn't discriminate. It's, it's, uh, it takes about four or five years to kill the tree once it's present. So you don't know it's there for four or five years and then all of a sudden it explodes in your area. So signs to look for would be a lot of woodpecker damage on trees. And then they have a D-shaped hole when they exit the tree. I was just down in Iowa a couple of weeks ago and it's, all the ash are dead along this river.
A D-shaped hole.
Is your mic turned on?
I can, I can talk a little closer. Is that better? Yeah. Yeah. So there's, there's a few different ways that you kind of go after this EAB. You, you cut down the ash trees, you replace them, you plant different sorts of trees. And then you can also inject an insecticide into the trees. You generally don't do that until you have an, an infestation really close to you. So it's not time to do that yet, but it can be cost effective in specific trees if there's high value shade trees, say in a person's yard or, you know, in a, in an area that's important to, to community. So this, this PowerPoint presentation here, it says, why do we manage Emerald Ash Borer? That's just kind of a background that, that somebody from Minnesota Department of Agriculture put together, just talking about, you know, where, where Emerald Ash Borer is, kind of where it's going, where they project it and kind of, kind of some of the costs that they, they associate with, you know, replacing all these ash trees. So it's, it's something you can look through and it's more anecdotal information and background. But the grant more specifically, you know, it's, it's available to all, all communities. The, the grant administrators in this, in the Twin Cities, this is the third or fourth round of grants they've done, and they've taken notice that there has not been any grants awarded to communities north of Duluth. So they'll specifically be looking to park some money up north. So this would be a good opportunity for us to, to jump on this. And the Falls submitted for the last round and didn't get anything, but this round they, they, you might get some as well. So it's, it's a pretty comprehensive grant. The, the grant is open now. It closes January 24th. So we've got about a month. And the full grant has to be executed by 2025, I believe June of 2025. So we've got a few years. This first year would be a lot of planning. The following year is the implementations. You're planting a bunch of trees, you're cutting down some of your more concerning ash trees. I took a drive around yesterday and the park is nearly pure ash. So getting some other trees going there.
Can you tell by the head of the town year what, if there is an infestation, can you tell that?
You could, you might have to take some bark off the tree, but if, if there was a real infestation there, you would be able to tell. There's no known infestation here. The closest is Duluth right now, but we do have the risk fact, major risk factors. Moving wood is how this thing moves. It, it moves naturally a few miles a year, but moving firewood, so you're talking Boyers National Park, the border to Canada and a lot of pulpwood coming into Boise. So that's how it's going to show up and it could be anytime, you know, a truck or a car can move it.
So trouble's impossible to stop. My question is, and I'm looking at your chart here.
Yeah.
So if you move your town, and I want to make sure this is the way I write, obviously, we come to ash trees in our town, what you're saying is about 30% of them are going to die? Is that, is that what this chart shows?
Yeah. When ash, Emerald Ash Borer shows up, if nothing's done, 30%.
So it has about a 30% mortality rate.
Yeah, it'll be 100% in the ash and 30% overall because they're 30%.
So if we take an inventory of our, I see you've got all the trees marked, if we take an inventory by actually counting our types of trees, is it fair to say that we can apply for a grant to replace, if we come with, come with 600, 600 trees and we can apply for a grant to replace 30% of them? Is, is that kind of what it's saying?
You could potentially, yeah, you could potentially replace all 600.
Oh, so we could apply, so we count them and then we just take a percentage that we believe is going to be replacement and we apply for that?
You certainly could.
And I'm looking at, what do we have to do? What is our duty in trying to find, is it to apply for a grant? For some trees, what's the procedure, I guess?
Yeah, so a, a tree inventory can be part of the grant. You can build that in and get funding to pay somebody to do that for you rather than hiring, you know, getting one of the staff people to go around with a, with a tree counter. Another requirement of it, of the grant is you develop an EAB management plan. So essentially laying out what your plan is as it approaches, when it gets here. And there's a lot of resources for that, including me. I can help you guys plan this grant, you know, pretty much from start to finish. I can't implement the, the grant because I will be the person checking on progress. But I can help you guys plan. I'm here for all your information, answer your questions, to connect you with the people if I don't know the answer.
I think I heard you right, that you could actually hire somebody to count dirt trees?
Yeah.
You would, you would help fill up the grant? And wages we have to pay for the consulting service, you know, can be applied in the grant?
Correct.
Is this, is this grant a yearly? Is this money available from year to year? If you miss the application deadline, is there an opportunity for next year? So international policy applied and so there must, there must have been this opportunity last year as well?
Yeah, so the last round closed this past November. The legislature's appropriated a certain amount of money. Some of it's passed through from MDA, some of it's directly to DNR and some of it's federal money passed through. So the legislature would have to appropriate again. So the next biennium, that's certainly a possibility, but no guarantees. So I think this past biennium, there was about $5 million they gave us to pass through to, to communities.
So I have a question also. I know that most of our ash trees, even the ones over in the park are over 21 feet high. So that means that we would be under the super grant.
That's, that's diameter.
Well, that's like 21.
Yeah. Yeah, so only 2.3% of your ash are in the, considered the, the extra large, the super.
About 18, right?
Correct.
So I mean, I, I don't know nothing about wood or lumber or anything, but so basically what we're going to do is replace all the ash trees. We're not going to have any more ash trees anymore? That one's going to happen? I don't understand. It's going to go on for year after year after year. Eventually going to run out of ash.
Well, I, I have a question regarding that.
Because there's no use planting ash trees if you're going to have ash trees.
Right. Planting ash trees will not be allowed in this grant.
Yeah, so what they're trying to do, I think, correct me if I'm wrong here, I think this, what to simplify this is, you know, one, the inventory, how many trees you got, and you'd say the number of, you can apply to replace those 100 trees, is what he's saying. Now obviously, a certain percentage of our ash, and it shows that if you act, when, when the ash borers shows up, 30% are going to die. That's kind of rule of thumb. So, but it don't say you can't apply for 100% and then replace with maple or, you know, herbs or another kind of trees. So, so that leads me to the question, then, do we get a price on replacing the trees from, say a shoulder or some professional tree planter? Because obviously, you know, what's the limit is, can you get 4-inch trees, 3-inch trees?
Uh, two, 2-inch diameter tree is the maximum.
So that's a maximum device, a 2-inch, so you're not going to allow you to come in to spade a little bit of trees down?
That would be great.
Yeah, so I, many of you have seen the trees planted around the Falls this past year or two. A lot of them are dead because of the drought. But those are the size of trees you'll probably be looking at. And I believe Showblooms planted those for the Falls. They, that was part of their purchase price was planting them for them. So that would be one possible option.
You know, Cheryl, she who had your game before that.
The last time that they had the city apply for a grant under the Emerald Ash Borer program, they received this grant, but then in the end, they didn't receive the money because the area, it wasn't under EAB warranty. Does that make, does this, this is the same?
No. No, this is available for any, any community in Minnesota. The only requirement for geographic funding would be for injecting trees with insecticide. You have to be within 10 miles of a known infestation. So that would be the only one where we, as a northern community, would not receive that funding and they just wouldn't approve it for us.
And one of the areas that, in this last round that they talked about was where the old grant needs to go up to, where that dead area and there is all ash, they talked about taking those out.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great, great thing to do. They're, they're in tough shape. Real tough.
And you wouldn't, you know, as far as the park goes, you wouldn't cut down every single tree in the park. You would have some sort of plan to replace.
They, they don't necessarily have to go back in the same spot, obviously. So correctly again, I mean, there's a, there's a grant, you can identify exelon for removal. Obviously you get 100 ash trees, you know, rule of thumb, you could say you could apply to remove 30 of them because that's what the, that's what the statistics say you would be removing. Or can you, if you have 100 dead ones, I suppose you can apply to remove all 100.
They don't have to be dead.
But they don't have to, so?
No, no, there's a maximum of $150,000 and you can apply for the maximum. If you want to diversify your forest, you can plant as many trees as you like.
Okay, that answers that. So, but they can, so we can apply to remove, remove even if they're not dead, which would make no sense, I don't think I would want a live tree. But if we can, we could, we knowing that some of these are going to die, we could apply for a grant to plant trees in, you know, within that range, I mean, within, within the city limits, they might not, might push trees or whatever we want to do, wherever we want to do it.
Yeah, on public land, within the city limits.
We could apply to get so many plantings, up to the $150,000. I mean, how much you grant us, I don't know, but we could apply up to $150,000 to remove dead trees and plant new ones.
Correct.
I have a question, and maybe this is more specific to each community's plan for managing their trees within their city limits or on their city property. But when we think about replacing the trees in anticipation for them dying, what does that look like? Is that something where you look ahead and you divest supply in anticipation of that? Or is that something where, like we have ash trees that are surviving still, so you would, but we would want to see if they would be some that survive because there will be some that survive? So I guess my question is more specifically, how can, do you know of how communities typically use this money? Do they find new areas to plant it or does it have to be, like, is there rules about the vicinity of what trees are replaced? And I guess I'm just trying to make sure that this grant is accomplished, it's likely you have to come in and just remove them down and then, and then plant these little tiny trees that wait 20 years.
Yeah, so that's part of the planning process. So that's sitting down with somebody who you guys want to, to help plan, whether it's Cheryl or one of, one of the board members or the council members. But kind of my vision of it would be to plant, say, 500 trees, to throw out a number. Plant 500 trees, these trees are six, eight feet tall, and then remove some ash trees. Remove the ones with holes in them, remove the ones with big cracks, remove the ones that are hanging over buildings, hanging over the street, ones that you think will go sooner rather than later. One of the problems with an EAB infested tree is they call it predictably unpredictable. Their structure deteriorates much faster than a tree that dies from other causes and they can fall nearly anyway. So the price to remove an Emerald Ash Borer, kill tree is far higher. So like you say, diversify with the plan to take out the rest of the ash trees, maybe 30, 40 years down the road. And, and not all at once. Maybe you take out 20, 30 trees a year.
Yeah, is it a game of trees?
Yeah. And this, and this tree survey here, this is a statistical sample and it was done in 2010, so it doesn't include any of the annexed areas.
It sounds like we just need to put the plan together. If they're going to help us put the plan together, then they're going to have more questions.
Yeah.
Couple of main questions, only on public property.
Correct.
So, so public property is, is number one. So where we determine we'd want new trees planted, it would have to be a public property. Obviously, when you take an inventory, you have a pretty good chance that all the trees are going to die at some time and have to be removed, whether they die tomorrow, next year, or the year after. So if we take an inventory, we can say, well, we got, you know, 1,000 trees in town that are going to die over what period of time? We can apply for removing of them when there's, oh, because we're going to get the grant and then we just put it in the fund and then the trees.
The grant has to be...
We said 2025. We had 2025 to spend the money.
Yeah, you, you have until 2025 to spend the money and it's a reimbursement. So you're going to purchase the trees from Showblooms, have them planted, you're going to let me know, I'm going to come look at them and then...
So let me use it, we get reimbursed, we got 2025 to do it.
Correct.
Okay, good. I didn't hear that part.
Yeah, so 2025 is the hard end date.
So in that area I was talking about, I think it's actually in the county driveway. I wonder what this?
It's public land within city limits. I'd have to look into the specifics of that question, but I think it's only public land. I don't know that it specifies county owned land. Boulevard trees are perfectly eligible for replacement. So I don't, I don't think that would be a problem. And that's probably a pretty wet, tough site. There would be, species selection would be really important in that area, but we could certainly look at that.
And is reimbursement also, as we plant them, we get a bill, we spend the bill, and we get the approved grant and they'll say what you need us. And it'd be 50,000, whatever, pick a number. But as we plant them, turn in the bill, it's deducted from the 50,000, we're reimbursed. Once we reach the ceiling of 50,000.
And you're done.
One removed after that, it's on our own dime, or one another planted after that, it's on our own dime, unless there's another program.
Right, right. And, you know, with...
Pretty clear enough. And, and so then I can see, you know, okay, I, I can see, I think moving forward, I think this is a good opportunity to get some trees, get some removals of others. Obviously in four years, we may have some issues with removing trees. But I also think probably you get to hire somebody such as your husband or somebody like that, and he'll help him with, help him with that. Well, he can't write the grant for us because he has to administer it, but we can, he'll certainly help us. Write the grant. I'm sure we got some qualified people, your husband Dave Austin, I'm just thinking, maybe Duane Shul, somebody like that that can help write the grant and you help him write the grant.
Yeah, all help plan, answer questions.
And maybe application and plant them and remove them as, if we want, you know, come up, we want this tree planted in front of, you know, in front of this ballpark along the street or something. We decide that's where we want trees, well, we'll make a motion and, and get a price from Showblooms and run the ticket out.
Have you worked with a community before who's got this money in the past?
No. Like I said, all the money's been parked down in the cities, a little bit in Duluth.
So do you know, and maybe you don't, maybe you don't, but do you know, or maybe you can find out, what communities typically do for these credentials that they're looking for, that you have to have?
Yeah.
So do they, do people, do communities contract them? Do you actually scout the trees?
It depends on the size of the community. You're talking communities that range from the size of St. Paul to the size of Bemidji. And some of them then have city foresters, some of them don't. And the staff who administer the grant certainly realize that. So hiring somebody like Showblooms or somebody who does have one of those credentials is something that they look favorably upon.
Is that the cost of hiring someone like that, is that, can that be written to the grant then?
Yeah, yeah, all contracting is written in.
So that, that's why I'd say we should hire a forester or something like that that has knowledge of the trees and, you know, can take inventory of those. So, yeah. And of course, you have an assistant app.
Yeah, so I mean, I can help on the planning, answer questions, talk about species selection. I mean, anything that has to do with it, if I don't know the answer offhand, I can find it. So kind of what you guys have to decide is how big of a bite you want to take, take out of this.
No, that's just a degree.
We have, you're going to have to have real numbers from somebody.
Well, that's right. Of course, a credible forester that can go around and say, you have...
So, so getting a... Getting a quote from Showblooms, how much does a tree cost and how much does it cost to stick it in the ground? Getting a quote from a, somebody who cuts down trees and how much does it cost to cut down a tree? I mean, what's, what's the total cost of replacing one tree? And it's probably about a thousand bucks.
Yeah, and then, you know, that's easy to do because we have tree services in town. It's just a matter of saying, we have 12-inch tree, a 20-inch tree, we need a unit price to remove the trees and a unit price to plant them. And we're also public land, moved down.
But if we apply for 150, they're going to tell us what we can have made. You might as well ask for 150 and then it's, well, you're only going to get 75. You're only going to get a typical...
Yeah, they, once they give us, once they give us the, it's reimbursed, but we got one tree down, we're going to get paid for one. One cut, you know, 50,000 or 100,000 or whatever, whatever you've been given at that, at that point, unless we decide we want, you know, everything done, we stop, plant the trees and stop.
Right, so you're going to hire somebody to come in and say, hey, okay, now's the time where we're going to move this year's, we're going to remove this year's trees. And they're going to go, come in and they're going to cut down the 10, 15, 20 trees. And then at that time, you can certify against the grant and then you'll be reimbursed.
Well, I think it's worth pursuing because obviously we don't get it, but we do need a, you know, we do, we need someone that's going to work with you to do this and, and I think we have to go with a forester or a secretary or a street or somebody that has credibility and has all of them. Showblooms might be funny, people even do it, but, and, or, or as you said, maybe we can hire somebody straight from school.
I don't know about that.
I have a question. I have a quick question. So once this, if like say a hypothetical grant gets approved, the community gets it, is there some sort of like follow-up or strings attached for making sure that the community that got the money and planted the trees is still taking care of them? Like how do we, as a city, have to submit something yearly or quarterly or whatever?
There's a three-year maintenance plan that's required as a part of, of the grant application. So through 2025 and then they'll likely be monitoring for those three, that three-year period. And that would, like I said, likely be me, I'll have to administer the, the on-the-ground portion of this. And, and anything on here that, you know, this is a small community, you don't have, you probably don't have GIS people, you, you probably don't have city foresters, I can provide that. I mean, they, they realize not everybody has city foresters, has GIS capabilities. I mean, there's, there's a lot of big communities out there that go after the assumption. So anything you guys don't have, I can help to, to try to bridge the gap.
Which don't spend all the money they grant and they send it back. Which they don't like. Make sure if you're going to apply for a $150,000 grant for tree removals, you're going to make sure you're going to remove $150,000 worth of trees.
And $150,000 worth of trees is a lot, a lot of work.
A lot of trees, a lot of trees. Did you say you could supply us with a name of, of people that could help us write the grant? I know you assist them, but...
Write, write the grant itself? Write the grant itself?
Yes.
I probably could figure out somebody, I don't know of somebody offhand.
Well, the first thing that we have to do is find either a forester or a grassrider, you know, only if they're one and the same.
Yeah.
But at the same time, that's, that's all upon us to do that.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, I know there's, there's people that do that, I know Mike Allen, I know forest management plans written by private contractors, ex-state employees.
Yeah, I've approved that.
So there are people that do that, but maybe if you could supply us with a name or two and then work directly with him and then they have a grant application and, and basically we probably have to do assignment.
Well, and you have to decide how much you're willing to take on. And then, you know, cutting down trees, that's always a touchy subject with people. So I mean, you guys are going to have to decide which trees go down, whose yard they come out of or whose boulevard they come out of, which, which trees.
Just to go down very quickly, because we only got about 10 seconds, so we got to get this discussed. We got to get started.
Yeah, the planning, the planning process, I would like to sit down with you guys again early to mid-January to hash out the rest of this. If there's any questions, also available by phone, email, text, any of that stuff. So we should sit down again early to mid-next month and hash this out before we submit. But yeah, I mean, it's, it's time to, these things go quick.
Well, I guess, I guess for the council's decision is, is first, do we want to do it? It seems like it makes sense to us. Yes, no?
I'll make a motion.
And then our second step would be, our second step would be then, let's try to find this forester, credible person, grassrider person and get him and then he can work directly with you to tell us what we have to do. And we, we understand that we want to plant a lot of trees, remove others and there's going to be, you know, I guess probably none of us here know the extent of how many have to be removed right now. If you drive out there looking, you can probably find out where you, you know, 20 that need removed.
Yeah.
He'll, he'll acquire some of that information real quick.
Yeah, and if you guys want to get a better feel for just what a person's looking for with trees to remove... Yeah, and if you guys want to get a better feel for just what a person's looking for with trees to remove, we can go take a walk through the park next week.
I would like to do that.
All right, just let me know when you, when you want to do it, and we'll do it.
Maybe when we do that, right, you know, and work directly with, directly with a forester, I mean, we got to get a, I think we need somebody, a, a Shoblum, that, or somebody, a forester, maybe retired forester, or Dave Austin, or somebody like that. And I just saw James out there, you could be the grants partner, he could be the forestry partner.
Just remember when we go for a tour, we can only have the council, and otherwise it's water. We can have two lots of things at the same time.
I'll elaborate for us.
You can just watch her picture.
I do. And, and you know what, I may be able to wear this too, to start looking for dead trees. So I think Nick probably has a pretty good handle on it, and he, he jumps on things right away. So, you know, you can take it right along the pick, and you'll get a pretty good feel of it. And you start noticing, pretty soon, you know, you're on a finger.
It, it doesn't take long to find, to find quite a few that are in tough shape.
How do you know when it, I had two ash trees in my yard, and they're shade trees. And I'm, right now, they have big cracks, the run from the top all the way down the trunk. I mean, you can stick your hand right in there, come summertime, it's closed up. How do you can tell when they're dying?
Well, I mean, from the time they sprout, they're on their way.
They have leaves, and the leaves on the top, then you have these great big black things on them.
Yeah, so a tree can persist for a long time in a, in a pretty poor state. But as they get older, they're more susceptible to disease, they're more susceptible to wind, they're more susceptible to, you know, saturated soil. So at some point in time, you just have to make a call that says, hey, you know, I don't want this thing to fall in my house.
I know mine, a lot of mine are bigger than twenty-one inches around, and they, it's tough to find a tree over a hundred years old. I believe we called your ass, but, you know, at least I've cut like forty now, but fifty, sixty.
Well, I guess there's got a box under it, oh, we should have two people, hey, put your arm around the trunk, it's okay.
Yeah.
So, you know, you think, but, you know, if they were there when you were kids.
Yeah, they were.
You know, well, you would never know them at the same time. Anyway, I appreciate yesterday. I think, Jay, you know, if you want to lead on this, and you want to lead on this, maybe you can try to find this, Dr. Wayne, he's interested. I, I don't know if he's figured out, maybe, you know, forester or something like that, but you're going to have to get prices of planting trees, and we will be talking Shoblums or something like that, and removals, you know.
Yep.
But I definitely want to be directly involved. I don't know if I would be the one to write the grant, because I don't know, I don't know what to see what is required and the type of, how it's set up in the language.
Well, I think something that we probably would apply for as much as we can get, we probably would apply for the whole thing. How much you can give us, I don't know.
Yeah.
I guess it's helping, you know, when you come with, with helping our grant writer, whoever it may be.
Yeah, and all, all the applications and, and tables and whatnot are available online. If you find this website here, the one that looks like this, the, the grant website, you can just Google, Google the title there, and it'll come up. And it's got the links to everything, it's got webinars that explain the actual grant process. There's a lot more information on there than I can explain to you in just a little bit here. But if you spend a, spend an hour exploring that, or a half hour.
Again, if you have a name of a person, I would appreciate that, I mean, because even though we think we've got a qualified individual, he may be the one somewhere.
I know somebody that's a grant writer. She's a grant writer, she answers for us for the second critical restoration.
Well, there you go. And then I think you need that.
But I'll speak to offering this grant writer, show it to her, and she's going to do it.
Yeah, yeah, and there's.
And we can pay her for it, correct?
Yeah, it's reimbursed from, through the grant.
Oh, that, that would not get reimbursed through the grant, because it would have happened before you were awarded the grant.
Well, I thought, what, what, I thought you said.
The tree survey and coming up with an EAB management plan would be part of it. But any work that happens before the, you're, you are awarded the grant is not reimbursable. Does that make sense? So, but.
Yeah, I was trying to clarify that, I thought the word prior to writing the grant was reimbursable.
No, it'd be like planting a tree last spring and getting paid for it, that's just not part of the, part of the deal.
Well, we'll get it, but, yeah, and what, while it's still not. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Second, all favor. So carry, thanks again.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Well, then, if you can secure the grant, and then if you can get the, if you can get that names of anybody that you may think is qualified, to Cheryl, and then someone to work with who have a couple names anyway.
Yeah, Cheryl's, Cheryl's got my contact information.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Merry Christmas.
Merry dear Christmas. To approve the minutes of the November sixteen, I'll make a motion to approve the, when it comes to meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Good, very good. Motion is second, all favor.
Aye.
Both, so carry. To approve the list of claims for November twenty, twenty twenty-one, anybody got any issue with the claims? Motion to approve, I'll second. Motion is second, all favor.
Aye.
Both, so carry. To accept the account accounts as a person's living financial statements to the general and larger sewer fund. With that, we're going to make a motion on that. We have quite a bit of money, it looks like we're going to have some excess money above the money, above the budget. And I think we've already made a motion to set up a road fund, and there was ten thousand six hundred dollars in it or something. But I would like to see twenty thousand, because we have eighty-four thousand dollars in the liquor fund. Twenty thousand transferred over to the liquor fund into the road fund. And if you're going to simply, you could ask, move, let it be a grant, you could ask money.
So you're saying you want the money that we take from the regular liquor store, and you want to put that into the road fund?
I do, yeah, and, and again, folks, we have power to move it from fund to fund, so if something comes up, we can transfer it. But it shows, what it shows me is that we're making a dedicated approach to keeping our roads maintained and repaired. And we establish a fund, the first thing, establish a fund, get this money in, so that it shows that that's what you're probably going to do with it.
Well, what we need to do is make a motion to accept the account balances and leverage of things from eleven thirty, twenty twenty-one. First, that motion has to be made, so I'll make that motion to accept that.
Okay, motion is second, all favor.
Aye.
Then we can make a motion that we want to dedicate the money from twenty twenty, the transfer from twenty twenty, we can put that into the road fund.
Except we can have a general fund.
So do we need, yes, do we need a motion on that, Cheryl?
Yeah, we transfer money, do, do we have to, well, we can make a motion that we.
I'll make the motion that we transfer, the money that we're going to transfer anyway, which is part of the budget, we will put that into the general fund, shoot for road repairs.
And how much is that, twenty, is it twenty thousand, twenty thousand liquor fund? Okay, do we also have excess in the general fund? Do you want to put another twenty thousand in the general fund, in the road fund?
No, I was just saying, we can always take that and do it anyway, right?
So now we've got a fund established with about thirty thousand dollars in road fund, with about thirty thousand dollars in it. Trying to clarify everything for everybody. So Todd, you did make a motion to transfer twenty thousand dollars from the liquor fund to the road fund. Do we got a second on that?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion is second, all favor.
Aye.
Both, so carry. Okay. All right, and that's, yeah, that's fine. We do have a, a excess amount in the general fund too, but we can, like you said, we can transfer that if and when we need to. But I think it does show that we're trying to get a road fund established, and we, because what's, what's going to happen? There, there may be a grant or just like the county, they come by, new road, and all of a sudden, they want ten, fifteen, twenty percent participation. Well, then we have to transfer it all to the general fund, we've got to look for it. Now, if we know we got it in there, we can easily put our, whatever that number is, if we have the fund available, and ask for our match, our match rates, we know the percentage is. Okay, moving on now. Well, let's, we've accepted all the balances of his personal financial statements, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, approve, approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven, out in the general fund budget. I'll make a motion, second. Okay, the motion is second, all favor.
Aye.
Both, so carry. To approve setting up a separate general fund, just, we just sent the budget forward. We just, oh, and depriving funds from the small city, small city. Road grants. When do we expect that money, Cheryl?
Wait, wait, we, we say.
Is that the ten thousand six?
Yeah.
Oh, so I guess we're ahead ourselves.
Yeah, I, can I, maybe that's much, is a hundred, hundred that's much.
Yeah, I'll make a motion on that, to approve the set of a separate fund of general road approvals from the twenty twenty-one states, small cities, assistance, accountable roads. Do we have a second?
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Both, so carry. Okay, to approve the liquor licenses for Lululeah group, can leave distillery, rain lady grill, and some tobacco licenses for Lululeah group.
I'll make a motion to that.
I'll second.
The motion is second, all favor.
Aye.
Both, so carry. To approve the ordinance one fifty-eight, man of council salary summary for the publication.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
You have a motion, second, all favor.
Aye.
Both, so carry. To accept November twenty twenty-one liquor store operating statement.
I'll make that motion.
Second. You have a motion, second, all favor.
Aye.
Both, so carry. Capital improvement planning update.
Aye.
Testing. Always wanted to do that. I think I said that before. Hello? Perfect. Before I get started, I have a question on the road fund that you set up. I know that you transferred ten thousand dollars from something to, into the road fund. Is that right? Plus you just transferred twenty thousand into us, so. So anyway, there's thirty thousand dollars.
We have about thirty thousand, six hundred.
Okay, the question I have is, when you made that motion, did you take a, two, two-part question? Did you put a percentage on that out of the budget so that it's, it continues to go in there, like two percent, one percent, three percent, or whatever? Well, maybe like, before, anytime we had a road project or something, we'd, we'd tap into general fund to pay our portion or whatever it was. And we thought, we decided that we have a dedicated program to road maintenance, and, and as counties and other cities, most of them have a dedicated fund for this, so I thought it'd be wise to set it up. The council thought it'd be wise to set up a dedicated fund, not that we can't add to it or draw from it, but it shows that we're thinking about it, and when a project comes out, hundreds of money gets aside for things just like this. It's a lot easier to spend than us to set it up for. So that's what we got right now. It is our plan, I think, in the future, Todd, it brought this up, we get about sixty-something thousand from the great, you know, northern transmission line.
Yeah.
From the county, and we started, well, about two, three years ago, we started, started rolling into a general fund. So I think it's been our plan, and we haven't acted on that yet, because to, to start putting that into the road fund. And that was a, a general concept that when, when they first thought about giving this to us, the county and the board, they said, what are you going to do with it? We said, we didn't, an infrastructure plan, which included roads and everything else. So I think we're obligated to follow that plan, and it's a good plan, that's what we need money for. So it was kind of a windfall, and it's going to be an annual windfall, so that's going to do the bulk of our road funding, I guess. Okay, and is there a? Find some, you know, a great liquor store, again, another twenty thousand extra there for something else, but that's, that's a good investment of money. Second question is, is there like a fence around that? I mean, is that what it's designated for, so you can't tap into it? Because it should be. Well, you know, again, all these funds, you know, obviously take board action to, to move funds as, as we just did. I, I don't think we talked about whether we're going to put a fence around any of these. They do have their primary purpose, and, and I guess we were setting them up for that purpose. So I, unless there's no other source of money available, or no other alternative, you know, we may get a, you know, fire or something that we absolutely need funds for. So I don't want to put a, a fence around them that you can't get through. But certainly, it would have to take council action to tap into these funds. And I, I think that's, I think we're all committed to keeping a road fund, but I, I don't know if we want to put too big a fence around it, because. The reason I ask is, I think, I don't know, maybe Cheryl can clarify this, isn't there a fence, or whatever you want to call it, around the water fund, because we pay escrow on that, each one of us? It's the same thing, we try to keep that so we can repair water, and, and, and that's how we're going to probably administer this, the same thing. We're using it primarily for that, but obviously, if we had to dip into it, you know.
There's other, we have to stress that money.
Situation at the time.
We can dedicate it, but if we need to borrow from it, we can.
Want to answer a question on the water, well, that is. Dedicated fund.
Dedicated.
So you're not going to touch that?
No.
Okay, I would recommend that you do that, I mean, unless it's extreme circumstances to the road fund.
It's easy to. Money on the road fund that we can't touch, because it's for infrastructure, it's a lot that comes from the power lines or whatever. That has to be for infrastructure, we can't use that.
Yeah, it's for infrastructure, well, that was our primary submission, we had to, the county board action again, they got changed, and, you know, that's, that's a good use for it, so I don't see doing that.
Are you thinking that in putting fences around that would prevent future decisions where maybe a council would presume to use that money for recreational purposes, for infrastructure?
For any other purpose, for any other purpose. I mean, one of the things, capital improvement team, if you will, said right off the bat was, we don't have any money to do any with the road. So let's create this account, or set, send this to the council to create the account, so we can start building that up. And in the meantime, we can do the little stuff to kind of beautify, beautify the area, you know, patch the holes and, and do whatever. So to build that up specifically for roads, and then a project comes along that some, that, you know, three-fifths of the council says we need, and then to rob that account, that's not a good thing.
No.
That's like, that's, that's like. You know, that's what the feds are doing with social security. I guess. I know you're not the feds. I guess you understand, you, you thought about social security, and it's a good one, because. Or at least make it more difficult. Well, and, and that's what I'm saying, right now, the only way we can do any of these things have to go through, like, just how we get a, a board action, whether you have a transfer of funds, you have to take the board action. Okay. Again, you can do, which you can do a super majority on both to transfer funds, which that is, is in other words, we'd have to have three fourths, it would be set to super majority, so it isn't a three-two vote, and, you know, it could have to be a, you know, four or five, or whatever that is, we can do that. Because it's, to me, and, and I got to tell you, we've been able to balance our rights to control our spending, but that don't mean something going to happen and change administrations and everything, so we've always been able to manage our money, so to speak. But like you say, if a project comes along, and everybody wants it, and you start robbing from everything to get it done.
Right.
And then that screws up all your planning.
Okay.
Something to think about in the next couple of months.
What's that?
It's something we can think about in the next couple of months, maybe.
But that's one way you can do something, is super majority and stuff, which, which. I mean, I'm not, I'm not asking.
Ten years from now, none of us are up there.
Right.
People, people lose connections with the original purpose of something all the time, so.
Absolutely.
Doing that would prevent future people from getting that short memory.
Right, and that's the same, you know, the water fund, there is that cage around it. You know, I mean, you're going to, if that money was ever taken to do something else. Well, there's a variety of reasons, assuming you have a dedicated fund in something. Assuming you have a dedicated fund in something such as a water fund, you realize that, well, it's getting depleted, so right away you make some adjustments and rates, you, you also, you know, so, so the idea of just doing what we did, making a dedicated fund, you know, that's what it's going to be used for, so you can start paying attention to it and when it gets to a certain size, you maybe start looking at projects, or if it gets depleted, then you start doing some transfers into it or change your.
Okay. I'm not asking you to change it right now, but just think about it. Um, I believe Cheryl gave you two documents. One is, uh, I think she called it the community plan spreadsheet, says core values, it's a great big one. Um, that was the document that we originally used that came out of the community plan. Um, I'm not going to go through each one of these, but, um, you can see the blue is already completed, the black is ongoing. Um, it would be nice to publish it so that the community knows what we're doing, where we are, um, how much we've done, and it's frankly been quite a bit. Um, but the one that I want to focus on is actually the, um, basically is the spreadsheet for the community improvement plan. I chatted about this a little bit, about the, not removing the roads off of the list, but creating this fund so that we have something to.
Maybe just, is it back, is it 20 or?
I just have a small.
Yeah.
I think it's two pages, right? Yeah, yeah. Um, so what we did is we created this, uh, community improvement plan and based it on the, um, I'll call them pillars, for lack of a better word, um, assets of the community that, uh, that we need to look at. Um, and this is in no special order, by the way. The one was the liquor store, what needs to be done with the liquor store, and there's a few items that are there. Uh, next is the community building, what needs to be done to keep the community building up to, uh, um, up to par. Parks and Recreation is a big one. Um, as far as I know, we're still waiting to approve the final draft from SEH, and then we will be ready to go and open it up to the community. Is that right?
We're supposed to have a, based off, I think we're waiting for some information back from SEH.
Okay.
And then, and then first, they thought that January was an appropriate time to try to shoot us up out there, use these notes back and forth, all that public works.
Okay, all right. Um, streets and alleys, that's the one I kind of want to focus on, that and, uh, and the one on the second page. But, uh, item one, S1, that's already done, that's completed, that, you folks have already done that. Uh, talking to Nick, there's quite a few aesthetic projects that he thought that we could do relatively quickly, within the next year or so, next summer. Um, he said when he first moved into the community, and I got two counselors here that were part of the committee, so help me out here, he said, you know, we need to paint those gutters, all of the yellow is gone where, on the corners, in the driveways or wherever they're supposed to be. Um, insofar as the potholes and the big cracks in some of the roads, um, there's a method that he said he could use, um, patch the holes or patch the cracks and then run over it with some kind of a steamroller or something, for lack of a better word. Dennis, you probably know more about that than I do, I don't know.
Coal patch.
Coal patch, yes, exactly. Um, you know, I know that it's putting a Band-Aid on a big, um, wound, but it gives us a little bit of time so that we can get some nickels into that road fund and possibly look for some grants in the next year or so. One of the reasons that we, that we kind of dumped off that, um, road project to build up the funds is, is because, um, it's my understanding that we're, we are kind of unsure as to what, um, how much money that we have to dump into projects that are already on the table. Um, they may cost us a little bit more than, um, than, than, um, what is budgeted for, let me put it that way. Um, so we kind of wanted to wait on that for just a little while until some of the projects that are already existing done.
On that, uh, dedicated road fund, what we probably should do is.
No, I can't hear you, Dennis.
On that dedicated road funds, uh, we've made a new contribution to it now, 30,000, 30,600 in it right now, but we, we should look at our first goal being right around that $100,000 mark, because when you try to do a project, you know, you don't get much for it, you know, and then usually you can try and put this matching fund, so I think, and, and that will be too hard to obtain if we, like Todd said, we get that $60,000 or something like that. I expect by July, Cheryl, when does that money come in from the county?
Uh, around July.
Yeah, around July, I expect we're speaking up on that number. And then there, we'll look at a project, and every year we should be doing something or, or, you know, slipping them out so often.
Good.
At least that's, I mean, I guess we can think about that, everybody think about that, you know, you know, do we want to get it to $100,000, or is it a million, we pick the number and we'll try to get to it, and then once we get to it, you know, we can have another dedicated fund or something else.
Right.
So we, we should look for a, you know, a somewhat of a cap on that fund. You know, just think about that, we don't have enough, we've got to get there first.
Right.
Cap.
Um, under S4, the signage, I know that the roads have to be renamed, county roads have to be changed into Rainier Roads.
Rainier Roads, yes.
Into Rainier Roads. Um, we spent quite a bit of time talking on how that process should work. Um, I don't know that we actually came up with a decision, and I'm going to ask the two counselors and the administrator. Um, some of us wanted to name the roads, some of us wanted to open it up to the public, which I know can be painful, but, um, to ensure transparency, that's probably the best. What's that, Todd?
Good input.
Absolutely, yep. But it is better, it is easier to be an editor than a drafter, so my recommendation would be that the community, the citizens that are pulled into this community team, name the roads, put it out to the rest of the community for discussion. We're going to have to have a discussion on it anyway, and then get that input. It's easier to be an editor than a drafter, and you're going to find that out, Jen, when you write that grant. Um, water and sewer, I know that we, are you approved, I should say, of GIS mapping of the water in the sewer systems?
Yes.
I think that's going to be, Nick?
We approved the, uh, mapping, just the locations of the sewer system, you know, the manholes and all the service lines and valves, so we can find them in the winter. If you have a water break or if you find a sewer manhole, you get covered up, it, it's really nice to have it. I mean, we looked for three days to figure out where the water comes in.
Right.
Which is best in the winter when we can understand that, so.
Right.
Then we've already approved funds for, around $5,000, we do that.
10 grand.
Huh?
10 grand.
Okay.
10 grand.
That's our opinion.
And I know that the team discussed, um, once we tear up the roads, or if the roads are being tore up, that's the time to do the water in the sewer if at all possible, if, if it needs to be done, you know, so kind of try to plan that out when, when, when the roads are done. There's no sense in digging up the road twice, dig it up once, bigger bang for your buck. And the last item on the second page was, uh, Public Works. I wish Nick was here, but, um, anyway, um, I think everybody in this room understands the storage problem that we have. I know I certainly do because I have city stuff in my garage, have had for a couple of years. Um, so the discussion was to update the storage area to create more space. Item two was purchase lease a new work truck. I think that there, we can do a cost benefit analysis, and I think that there's more justification to purchase some kind of a work truck that would allow, um, plowing and things like that. Um, I can't remember what they said the contract was with the, um, with the person that plows right now, but I think the payback would be in about three or four years, something like that. Um, but to do that and to keep that equipment, um, there is definitely a need for some kind of a heated workshop for Public Works.
Public demand over here.
Probably.
That's probably where we have to put it.
Probably. I mean, I know that, I know that the maintenance person has got the capabilities and the skills, you know, to do, um, probably more than rudimentary maintenance on the equipment that we have, so it doesn't make any sense to pay somebody to do it. We just need the space to do it.
Right.
Um, so my guess is we're going to probably push that when we bring in the community members, and hopefully we can get that built in the next few years, and, um, hopefully get past a break even point in three or four years, something like that.
Create a building fund?
What's that?
Building fund? Want to make another fund? We're going. When the technical. There may be development tomorrow, there may be just some discussions on, uh, uh, the shop, the city shop, and have some discussions tomorrow, you know, in a sense talking about particularly may, may need to, you know, something to do with the city shop, so I'll see what they, you know, turn up tomorrow.
Good.
It's a little too, a little too early to even discuss right now.
Okay.
It's a possibility some might be able to go down.
Now.
There is a need.
Now, this is just the, uh, these are just the projects that the five of us talked about. Um, I think it's time to open this up to the public, um, and to seek their input and to get their, get their community involvement. Um, if you recall our first discussion, we wanted, I believe it was eight people total, that's a piece of paper right here. Um, and Jennifer and Nick have both agreed to go on the radio and be radio stars, everybody gets to see them on the radio. And, huh?
See them on the.
See them on the radio. Don't you see people on the radio?
I do.
And, and ask for citizen input. Um, I do believe we said maximum of eight citizen committee members, one from each house, only one member per household, if I do recall the conversation. Um, and that's what we want to do next month. We want to kick, start this off and get it going, and hopefully we can have the first meeting with the citizens that volunteer, if you will, in February. We would like to have something final to present to the council by May, so that the council can at least give a, um, preliminary approval before we open it up for public input. That's our schedule. Thoughts?
Sounds good to me.
Good?
Well, I appreciate it, but it looks like you've got a bad job, or I didn't expect this, this much coordination, I guess, it was well organized.
Well, I just had to whip.
And finds are used. Crazy, get them on the right, you turn this up here, I realize what you got on this, you can call the shit off.
So with your approval, I don't know that a motion is necessary, but with your approval, we'll go ahead and open it up and, um, go forth.
I'll make a motion to go forward. Let's just exactly move forward with just the, the new plan that I have.
Open this up, open this up to get the.
I can watch, what was it?
Open this up to get the citizens involved in the committee. Based on this plan, based on the plan that's in front of you.
So is the motion to, um, appoint a committee for capital improvement planning?
Volunteer committee.
Volunteer committee.
Citizens, we want to open it up to the citizens, if you want to be on it, it's going to be up to eight.
Up to eight.
10, 1 for me, 10 for them.
Oh, maximum one, right, we don't want to stack the deck.
Well, we have a motion is second, on paper. Aye. Both. So Kerry.
Thank you.
My, my. Okay, uh, next to, to, we want to adjust the part, to your term of planning and zoning committee, I'll make that motion. Second. We have a motion is second, on paper. Aye. Both. So Kerry, to approve ordinance 159, sewer rates, have that figure change increased for publication, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion is second, on paper. Aye. Both. So Kerry. Motion is third.[1789.87]